All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the physical, in the liberty and justice for all.
Good early evening everybody. Welcome to five o'clock edition of the Board of Supervisors. The first thing on our agenda is a presentation of a service award to our very own Stan Dury for his service as auditor in the Dozart Township for the last several years. Mr. Dury, would you please come to the podium? This is Stan Dury, he's been our auditor for the last few years. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Don't ever leave.
I shall.
And this plaque is presented to you by the Dozart Township Board of Supervisors on the 2nd day of February 2016 for your service and dedication as a member of the elected Board of Auditors, March 20, 2012 to December 31, 2015. Thank you, we will miss you, and you're so good at what you do.
Thank you very much. May I offer a few remarks?
Please, please. This is for you.
First, an apology to the Board, the, I'm sorry. Because I've been privileged over the last, I guess, two years now to also sit on the Advisory Board of Pro Act in the Council of Southeast Pennsylvania. The reason I apologize for that is because our monthly Board meeting coincides with the first meeting of the month of the Supervisors, so it means I'm not here a lot. And I apologize for that because I'd like to be in both places, but as the old saying goes, how can you be two places at once when you're really nowhere at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd also like to thank you personally for your continued advocacy for the recovery community and addiction prevention.
Thank you.
That's a very important, and the rest of the Board.
We have a whole Board supporting me.
Exactly, supporting that as well. Really important element of the community, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the award and thank you for your continued support.
We'll need your help in this education and prevention.
I'll be there.
That we're doing, thank you.
And now I have to apologize again because I'd love to stay for the meeting, but.
You gotta go.
Have to be somewhere else.
The Pro Act meeting starts in about 20 minutes, so I have to be there, so.
Well, tell our friends there, we say hi.
I will, thank you very much. Thanks.
Stan, if I may, we are on the website, so you can watch the Board meetings, and we're also on the television channel, 22 and 31.
That's right.
So you can be in two places at once.
But I don't miss them.
Just not here.
I'm just not here in the flesh, so.
Oh, okay.
But thanks for the reminder, for all.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the Zabetta team have a presentation. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I'm here this evening to give you a brief update on our Towns Edge community. I'm here to present an update on our Towns Edge community. Towns Edge, as you recall, is approximately three acres. And what we've done, just to give you a quick perspective of scales, this is an aerial that are painted at the office, areas around, this is the Towns Edge piece here. Here's the new building that we're proposing. We thought it was important for you to see the scale compared to what's around it. We feel that this building fits exceedingly well on the site. Our previous design that we had, we're very proud of, I thought it was award-winning architecture, but quite frankly, markets have changed, some pushback on traffic, trains, et cetera, for the level that we were trying to get to. This still provides us something I can be most proud of, and it's exciting, I believe, for the community. It's architecturally interesting, it has a tremendous amount of real plausible benefit to the site as well. We're seeking to switch to B5 for the youth group. We met with the planning commission, which seemed to be reasonably pleased with the concept, but immediately suggested that we better attest the B5, hence sent us back for a township staff meeting and council review. I left that meeting with a nod that this definitely is a B5 application that we were seeking. So again, attesting the shape, the size, the plan itself is, basically, our intentions are to take, the barn that is there and the house that is there will be coming down. We will however be repurposing all of those materials. The stonework from both the house and the barn will be used as to create, in our opinion, a plausible agricultural-type structure. This being replicated as if this were an original barn, add-on pieces throughout some time. When one takes a closer look at that, you'll see window grilles are actually different, two over two, one over one, six over six, in the different sections. There's infill of stone, as if this were a replicated animal throughfare or staging area for cattle in and out, infill with a slightly different tone of stone. So there's a lot of architectural style and thought that has gone into this, and we'll be reusing that stone from the original structures. Barn timbers and plankings will also be being used as exposed show timbers and features inside the new structure. So this is the front, we're somewhere in the vicinity, about 140 feet back from the road, so we've got a good separation off of lower state. And the creative use in this particular application, whereas our other designs were, in essence, running more perpendicular to the roadway, hence fighting about, Greg, what, a 14 to 16-foot grade drop, which was very intense with retaining walls and reasonably costly and pulling us pretty tight to the side property lines, this is freeing up a lot of space. So in essence, we're going to come around and then approach in from the back, and then this will be the equivalent as if this were a true bank barn. Parking will be under the structure itself, there'll be two cars deep for each of the units. Now, of course, one is parked in, but it is part of your family that's parking you in. We then have 24 parking places around the exterior, as well as 12 additional in front of the building itself. So we're comfortable, we readily address parking. Areas for a dumpster behind a covered fence. In this particular earlier version, I was able to only get 10 of the units parked in. Hence, we were going to do two more run-and-shed-type parking garages. I've spent some time, and we do have, in this case, almost, excuse me, 10,000 extra feet of incubators, looking to not add units, of course, but to creep these out a little bit further, and if I do so, the geometry suggests we can get everything under the structure, hence not needing detached garages.
You want some water?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure, no.
So that is our concept, but what's really interesting, is when we look at the back of the existing barn now, it has these exact-type openings for haydrops, cattle, horses, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So it really does have some architectural plausibility. So standing seam materials, appropriate windows, good scale, good dimension, as to create a plausible original egg structure that started with three different additions over time, which would be very, very common in agricultural progress throughout Bucks County with our expansion. That is the basic gist of the topic. I know you have a very intense agenda tonight, so I won't drone on, but.
So you have six dwelling units in that?
There is a total of two floors.
Two floors.
With six dwelling units per floor, for a total of 12.
12, oh, 12.
Oh, okay. I didn't pick that up.
So they're like apartments then?
One-floor condos.
It's our interpretation of the B5 stacking them as individual with dividing walls, as that suggests.
Clever, clever interpretation.
Yes. And we, in fact, have attested it with Greg and feel that we are 100% conforming with no need for any relief.
Right.
Other things of interest with this, that makes my life slightly simpler, is where we don't need a lift station in this application, we can gravity sewer, because we're not driving so deep back into the site. The topography is out along lower state, could be more of a natural blend-in without the need for as much retaining and heavy excavation. So we, and we'll also be able to leave much more of the natural buffer that's existing on the side yards currently, whereas before, you know, we were encroaching into it and then aggressively replacing all of it. This is simply, there's a lot to be said, even though it's not specimen quality for natural buffer and the height and density that provides it.
You had mentioned the market has changed, so that's why you're coming up with a different proposal.
The market is definitely.
So what is your, who are you looking for to rent here? What is it, because I saw they were 1,300?
These were 13, I'm going to creep them out a bit more, because that's going to, if we creep those up to 16-ish, 1650, it appears at that point that I can solve this garage dilemma and have everything below the units, hence not needing those extra detached structures. Our market is, this is for the person that, you know, we did Pine Tree Farm, I had numerous people in Pine Tree Farm that have asked me, "Look, these were great, but we actually want something a little bit less, with even less maintenance, simpler, use simpler application, still high-end finishes, still high-quality, but one-floor living." And I've had numerous requests, I actually may have at least one person in that community now that's expressing interest in considering this, as well as several of our clients that are getting older. We've built three houses for some of these people over 35 years.
And ready to scale down.
And they're saying, you know, "We want your quality, we want the detail, we want the amazing features, but, you know, I've got my knees replaced, I've got my hip, yeah, we can do elevators, but I really like this one-floor concept." A lot of the problems oftentimes with the one-floor concept, and I don't mean to be snobby, but a lot of architectural detail sometimes is tough to create in that ranch house configuration. This allows us to be creative, have some substantive push for the architecture, yet still have that one floor.
And you're selling them?
Excuse me?
You're selling them?
These are, these are to be sold.
My intention are to sell. As with Pine Tree, at one point, my intention was to hold on to one or two if I could budget to do so, but for the most part.
What do you expect the price point to be?
You know, I'm running numbers still, I'm waiting for some information back from Greg, but I'm within two weeks of having some real numbers. I'd be glad to share them.
Okay, just curious. All right, is there any questions? What are you looking for, from us?
There's no approval, just wanted to make sure that if anybody has any questions, comments, or any areas of interest.
As with all of our projects we've done with you in most townships, we pride ourselves in working in a direction and unity with the township itself. So it's more just to attest that the concept visually you're on board with, it's pleasing, it makes sense, and there's nothing, you're saying, "What were you thinking when you marched in?"
Okay, we're not going to say that.
Well, in the original plan, you were preserving the house and the barn, correct?
It's true.
And was that due to it was an old barn and house, you just wanted to preserve it, or what was the driver to preserve it at the beginning?
The driver, of course, on that is, and I know what I can do with an original barn. I've done them before, I've done several conversions, and they can be an amazing home site. It's expensive to do it properly, and the house itself, being it was an all-stone structure, I equally felt that we could do some formidable enhancements and make, within the right addition. The problem happens, to do it properly for the client level that we typically work with, it's almost stripping it down to a bare core and then retrofitting everything. When I've done that, it's, I've done it for pride of ownership, it's actually considerably more expensive, and the market on this exact location is saying, "Maybe not."
Right.
And I still believe the other would work, I do believe the risk is higher than the other. I had one client that, quite frankly, was good at a million eight and ready to go, but wanted me to show him two other people in there with safety in numbers. So, and the market in the world was a little bit more stable, I would speculate, because I still believe the other concept would work. This, I'm comfortable enough, there's a safety margin, yet I still feel I've compromised our product, it's still creative, it's still something that's interesting, and I think an asset to the township.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Looks like all ahead full.
Great. I appreciate it. Mr. Gorso will be off to work tomorrow.
All right. Good luck.
Thank you.
Right now, we have a presentation from the folks who are doing our municipal building plans. Donovan Group. This would be very long.
It will be or won't?
It will not be very long. They have marching orders.
Just waiting for everybody in the back to load our presentation, which will be up on the screen.
Okay.
Thank you so much. As everybody know, about 2014, we began working with Phillips Donovan on building renovations here. Last year, we spent a number of months with sort of a large committee staff, two people from the Board of Supervisors, two people from our Ways and Means Committee. At the end of the year, we did open houses on two concepts that Phillips Donovan had come up with, and about November, December timeframe, Mr. Snyder recommended that we scale back, take some time, and review everything, where we're at, what we need to keep, how we can scale it back. And that really started from Dick John looking at the salt storage building that was part of this, but something we were able to do in-house. And so from that, we began looking at ways of improving on what we had come to. And I think tonight you'll see we've really done a great job getting us to where we're at. And I guess the question is, is why do we need to renovate? And, you know, one of the things is the site security, which is lacking in this facility. The prisoner holding area, the in-and-out is exposed to the elements. You can watch from the park as our police officers bring detainees in and out of the facility. It's not safe, it's not safe for the public, it's not safe for our officers and the detainees. So, and then you have the prisoner release in the same situation. It's a workflow and traffic flow. Big trucks coming in and out, we have the park next door, we have people coming and going in the building and walking around the facility. So site security is number one. This building, main part of the building is 50 years old almost, and the infrastructure and upgrades requires new heating, HVAC plumbing, electrical, our telecommunications, accessibility, fire and security systems need to be upgraded to meet today's standards for buildings. Our mechanical bays, which join our administrative offices, on numerous occasions, we have fumes from there entering, so the ventilation system needs to be upgraded. And just the inadequate in the administration, the workflow, sometimes it hinders people upstairs, people downstairs. We have auditors that come in, they're down here, our finance is up on the second floor, they're running back and forth. So being able to bring everything onto one floor and work together is, has been a goal. So what have we done? Under working with Mr. Snyder, we began our project meetings, which I said last year, we identified our space requirements, we had numerous scenarios, and we came up with those two major concepts where we had the public in, in September, to be able to view what we were looking at and why. But in November, November 25th, we revised our group, we had a small group focus, it was Mr. John, Mr. Snyder, myself, the architects from Phillips Donovan, as well as two residents that started to participate, Keith Peters and Joe Salvati, who wanted to participate, and their insight was very helpful. And Mrs. Lyons came in and popped in, and what we did is we met with our department heads when we needed to focus on a specific area, like police, the chief came in, talked about parks and recreation. Our Karen Sweeney, our Parks and Rec Director, came in, when we needed finance, we brought the finance department head in. And so we were able to work with everybody, get their input, and basically, we promised that we would come back to you today, and we're here, with our concepts that we've developed. And I think, as Mr. Snyder does, I think we've, we've really worked hard together in the input from everybody, I think we've taken the best of the various alternatives that we've looked at, and I think we're going to look at this. And one of the focuses that Mr. Peters kept saying is, "Look at this, what you're going to be doing in 30 years." You have to not just look at today and what your needs are, but look out and make sure that whatever we're going to be doing is going to meet the needs of the township for the next 30 to 50 years. Okay. Okay, guys, we're having technical difficulty.
I tell a joke a lot?
It's cycling. I did. There we go. So our cost reductions that we started with on those two concepts back in September were about 8.6 to 10.5 million dollars. And through the discussions and the work that we've done, because we don't need to relocate the tennis courts, we addressed our large evidence storage, the storm basin work that need, that we needed with the other concepts, our park maintenance storage, the wash bay, the salt storage, we've reduced the savings and the expected costs somewhere between 1.9 to 2.5 million dollars. And this is what we have, it's called a bubble drawing right now, but I think it takes the best of the best. And I'm going to have Joe Phillips from Phillips Donovan walk the board through the bubble drawing.
I'll stand in front of that.
Well, you're going to need the microphone, but, here.
Yeah, you can see this. Let me do that. All right, so we have the existing building, Wells Road is, is out here to the left of the drawing. And we are in the meeting room, which is in approximately this location now. So administrative offices, the bays for the fleet maintenance are in this area, and then the police comes to approximately here. So these areas to about there are additions, the rest of the building exists to the left of the drawing. What we have is a common entrance up front, a common entrance porch, there's still a separate entrance for administration, come in for all administrative services into one entrance and go straight into the public meeting room. Then there's a separate entrance for police, their own separate small lobby toilet facility, but they're all very visible from the front of the building, it keeps all the public traffic to the front of the building, and easily identified entrance. We then have the codes department and the administrative, finance, as they move back, and park and rec in the green in the back here. Again, public meetings, public lobbies, this is very easy to control for security reasons, close off points so that the general public on meeting nights doesn't get back into the offices and only get where they need to get. Public toilet rooms are out here, conference rooms, AV. And then the police, we have administrative offices up front, and what you see in the red is all the secure areas. Right now, these areas that you see in red are not available to the police department. There's basically a Sallyport and a very secure system, a way of bringing people in, holding them, interviewing them, questioning them, allowing attorneys and parents, if that be the case, or spouses, to come in, not going through the rest of the station. And then also, a very clean way to release any detainees, when they're released, out to whoever might be picking them up to the parking area and out. And that is something that is completely lacking right now. Yes, you have holding rooms, but the whole progression of how you bring someone in, how you question them, how you hold them until someone can, can pick them up, that doesn't really exist, a good way to do that. As you move back, you can see the squad areas, detective areas, some evidence and evidence storage areas, some locker areas in the back here. The public meeting room, we have some training areas in the back of the public meeting room that will be shared by administrative and police from both sides, they're accessible. And then there's also locker facilities which are internal to the building, they don't need light or windows or anything. So what you'll notice is we've worked on a lot of concepts that actually had park and rec activity rooms included in them. This concept, as we refined it, was brought to our attention, and there was a lot of discussion really about where did the park and rec activities really belong. And as we looked at the site plan, and as we looked at utilizing the existing building and then adding to the back of it, there became, we became aware of some circulation problems, not only vehicular, but pedestrian circulation problems, and where we would bring people in, the activity rooms. We had actually located the activity rooms in the existing part of the building behind of, behind where we're proposing for the public meetings, because again, they were, that's a high space now, block walls, we didn't really need to get a lot of light in there. But there was questions about noise, having a lot of active kids or adults in those rooms, and how that would affect both police and admin. We also would have to bring them back, because we had a separate entrance to get to those rooms, so that they could be used when the other offices were closed and everything could be secured. That created some difficulties of where do these people park, how do they find that entrance, how do they get there? So what we're at right now is we're proposing a separate building to house these activity rooms off of New Britton Road. You'll see that there's the parking, there's the parkway, parking for the trail, and then there's township parking lots here. And we're proposing a building that's somewhere in the 4,000 to 5,000 square foot range to house activity rooms. There's a small kitchen, there's toilet rooms for these activities, and there's also proposed, and again, these are just concepts or bubbles, but there's also proposed to be some toilet rooms that are accessible from the exterior, so when the facility is closed, that people using the park, the soccer fields, can have access to toilets out on the New Britton Road site as well. So that's where we're at. These spaces basically replicate what we had proposed in other concepts to include within the building that we were proposing before.
Thank you, gentlemen. So what were the major drivers for this? And when we sat down and the committee compared the site security and the traffic flow around the facilities, and really taking the big trucks and the police cars that come in and out of the facility, and the flow of traffic with pedestrians, and our site congestion, and the workflow, et cetera, we looked at all of that, and we looked at what we had been proposing previously, what the pluses were, and when we look at renovating the existing administration and police building with the new activity room, I think it balanced out, and we really felt like each one got an extra plus for what it ended up at with this new drawing and everything. So it meets that. The other nice thing about this, and you may not be able to see it, but the final number at the bottom, is that the cost of doing this proposal with the renovations to this existing facility, the activity room, the carport for, and the evidence storage unit that we're doing, and the way we were able to combine everything in the fueling and the plane courts, et cetera, we're able to bring the project cost estimate to $7,996,248, well below where our high numbers were previously. So our recommendation from the committee would be to continue to pursue the concepts to renovate the existing administration-police buildings and build the new activity room on New Britton Road. We believe this will ensure our site safety needs, it will alleviate the site congestion, it will retain the Central Park aesthetics, which was very important to the committee, and I think it will allow us to improve police and administration workflow. So what are our next steps? I think we still need some work in refining our selected design concept. We want. We want to move this from the bubble drawing to true architectural drawings. We want to continue to work with our Ways and Means Committee in developing our funding scenarios for the board. We also want to develop that projection phasing, because obviously, that's going to be a big part of how it's phased and work to really minimize and/or eliminate any temporary space for offices when we do this. So the phasing of it all and the logistics of moving everything and everyone around is going to be very important, so that needs to be developed further. We want to revise our architectural and engineering agreements and make sure that we're reflecting the scope of the work and the selected design concept. And we want to develop a schedule for completion of bidding and construction documents. Did I cover everything, Mr. Snyder?
I think you covered everything. Great job.
You have on this budget cost summary, the one hundred and fifty-seven thousand for temporary housing. We're not going to do the red building or remember that discussion?
Well, we had, at one point in time, if you remember, we had almost three hundred thousand dollars in for temporary offices, and that was looking at taking all the office space we currently had here for police, administration, finance, parks, whatever, and housing temporarily in temporary trailer units, basically. With constructing, and again, this goes to phasing, if we construct the activity rooms off of New Britain Road first, the thought is that we can at least satisfy half of the needs in that building on a temporary basis for offices. So to be safe, we were currently carrying half of what we had in for temporary office space, as was outlined in the presentation. As we would move forward, we would look for ways to try to minimize or eliminate that as well. But for budgeting purposes right now, we thought it was important to at least include that half in there.
Yeah, so the red building is off the table for housing or temporary office space, the red building.
The seventy by seventy?
Yeah.
That would continue to be used for our recreation programs until?
Well, that's the second floor.
You would have to shut down the programs.
Just to clarify, there's a seventy by seventy building now that's used for park and recs storage and police. That's part of the phasing, that's being converted to the fleet maintenance. And that does have to happen first, too, because we need to get them out of this building. But you could conceivably use the second floor of the red building.
I thought that was part of the discussion at the last meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. I mean, there's a lot of details that need to get flushed out yet. So what we're recommending is go to the next step. Let's start flushing these out, get the agreements in place, and make sure we can start to iron out these details. We think we have a good concept, and let's move forward with it.
Questions on the board?
I don't have any, right? A lot of good work and I think a lot of thought in it.
Sean?
Just briefly, to go to the next step, just to get from bubble to architectural drawings, is that part of our original budget amount for Donovan and that, or is that?
We'll have to look at that. I know we hadn't spent everything that we had originally budgeted for them, and we carried it over for this year, hoping that we would be able to do that. So we'll look at their proposal and make sure that we are within.
It would have to come back here for approval before it changes. Yeah, so we would have to do that.
Thank you, that's all I have.
If I could just bounce off of that, I think previously, Mr. Garten had mentioned that when we start getting into serious dollars, that we should get a resolution to cover our to?
To reimburse ourselves.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I talked to Stephanie, we just need to make sure we have an idea of when this is going to get kicked off, because those resolutions have a certain duration. So we need to make sure, but I'll flesh that out somewhat.
Okay. Thanks. Good.
Okay. I think you got to go ahead.
Yeah, good job. I don't know if anybody in the audience has any questions.
Anybody have any questions from out there? Thank you, Ken, for taking on the microphone committee and?
You're welcome. Thank you, Stephanie. Thanks, Joe. Jim, thank you.
You can take your time. That way you keep them on.
Thank you.
Thank you. These guys have done a great job. They've worked hard on Phillips Donovan. Okay, visitors and public comment. Any from out there? Okay, moving on. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, February 16th at seven. We're going to be closed Monday, February 15th for President's Day. Stormwater survey, we need everyone to complete the stormwater survey. You can get it on doilstownpa.org, and we need that information for our, you know, the planning that we have to do. Ski tickets and movie tickets are available through the administrative offices, and they are at good prices. Christmas tree drop-off up only until February 14th at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. And we are taking nominations for the Unsung Hero Award. Send them in to either Stephanie or myself. You can email them to the building, and we need them by March 1st, 2016. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of January 19th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions, corrections? All in favor?
There was, I had one correction, I think, on the meeting minutes on page three under Supervisor, Section E, talks about the Ways and Means Committee will hold a re-award, blah, blah, blah. The committee will also be reviewing the 2015 budget process and may improve incorporated designs for 2017. We actually, it was reviewing the 2016 budget process.
No, it was reviewing 2015 budget process for 2016.
But it was the 2016 budget.
2016 budget process. Oh, that's right, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Noted? Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the report from solicitor.
I just want to spend a couple moments bringing people up to date on where we are with the sewer project. Ms. Mason and I have met with numerous residents where we have to acquire easements for the purposes of installing the new sewer system. I'd say we have resolved all but three. Two of the ones that are open will be resolved, I think, relatively soon. The one is a lot more problematic, so I believe we'll be coming back for a resolution of condemnation in the near future. In addition, as a result of that process, including the engineer from Gilmore Associates that's doing the design, we have discovered some design changes that didn't affect the functionality of the system, but reduced the cost to the ultimate payer of the service, which is all the residents are going to benefit by it. So it was an excellent process as far as not only talking to residents about their concerns, but also finding ways that the design could have been modified to save some money, and I think that's underway. I'm cautiously optimistic that we should be going out to bid sometime in the spring, and hopefully, they'll be starting sometime after the bidding process, whatever, late summer, something like that, that timeframe.
No, thank you.
And anything else? I don't think I missed anything, have I?
I don't think so.
Okay. So that's sort of the status of where we are with the sewer project.
Paying attention, Joe?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions about that? I'm going to single you out, because you're paying attention. Do we have any other comments about that?
No, no. Let's keep it moving.
It's been, you know, it's been tough because people want to know, why is it my property being affected? So a lot of it was handholding and kind of explaining to people and why me and that kind of thing, because obviously, when you do a sewer project, not everybody has a sewer line in their backyard. So it was a lot of, you know, kind of bringing, explaining to people and understanding the consequences, or a lot of it was public relations as opposed to negotiation, so.
All right, keeping it moving. You're not talking about the meeting, are you?
No.
Project. All right, well, we'll keep the meeting going as well. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Township engineer?
Nothing received.
Manager?
I just have a couple things. On your table tonight is a letter that we received from the Bureau of Recreation and Conservation, P A D C N R. You might remember that we had applied for a grant for the Kids Castle project. Unfortunately, that was not funded.
The second thing I have is an article that appeared in the paper recently on radon testing, and Mr. Snyder asked me to bring this up. This was brought up to our Environmental Advisory Council. The article in the paper is about the borough participating with DEP. We, too, could participate with DEP. I know that the EAC was a little hesitant to jump on the bandwagon, because they were a little concerned about how that would impact the residents, if they would have to be forced to do any mitigation, things like that. We found out some additional information, and DEP is providing a free test kit to participant, resident participants from a number of different municipalities. They offered it to about twenty to twenty-five municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. Four so far have signed up to participate. So they have plenty of kits available, and there's still time to participate. We did put an article in our newsletter that was just recently set out about radon and how you can test and how important it is. I know a lot of people talk about it during a resale of a home and things like that. It's certainly a concern, and if the board is interested, I'm sure the EAC would consider it again at their meeting next week, but we could, all we have to do is provide a mailing list of property owners in the township to DEP, and our residents could then take advantage of the program and get those free test kits. If their numbers came back high, and it's all voluntary, so if they want to participate, they can, if they don't, they don't have to. But if they did want to participate and their numbers came back high, it's my understanding that they would be provided additional testing. There's no requirements to mitigate, but certainly, if they wanted to, there's advice that DEP would provide them with that. So certainly.
I think they should at least send them the information and give them the option.
Yeah.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I, when I was talking to Stephanie, I was trying to understand what the downside of it was.
I don't see one.
And I didn't see one, so I think it might be good to?
There is no DEP requirement where they'll come in and inspect and make you do things. They don't have that authority. This is more of letting people know that there's an issue, you should do something about it if you have to. We're here to help, and we're not going to be Big Brother.
Right, right.
All right, Sean?
I think it's a great idea. In fact, I did it a little over a year ago, and it's just a little charcoal thing you just hang, and you get it very well, it's very well done, and it gives you what the radon reading is. And then there's also a list of approved radon mitigators, two of them local, and it, it's very, if that number's high that you get back, you're going to have a difficult time selling your home at some point in time. So yes, you can wait until you're ready to sell and then spend the money to put it in, or you could put it in now and enjoy free air for as long as you're there. So it's a great program, and if anybody wants any more information, I'd be glad to help.
So we should go ahead and/or send the list of properties to DEP? Okay, will do.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Stephanie?
No, I have nothing else.
Joe, I have a question.
No, just an initial comment as you.
You have to take the microphone.
Or the one behind you.
There's one right behind you. Or say nothing, Joe. You have a choice. Get up and talk or?
No, really, it's on the, regarding the radon. You might want to also put in there that just because, you may have had your home tested when you first bought it years ago, as I had, which it passed. And I'd say about ten years ago, we had it retested, and it turned out that we had a significant radon level at that time that we didn't have when we first bought the home. So just something to put out there, just because you had it tested, you still might want to have it retested.
Good, thank you. All right, Supervisors, Ryan, you have anything?
Nothing for me to add.
I have two things. One, Stephanie and I reviewing the Public Water and Sewer Authority Advisory Committee resolution, and it needs some updating, and times have changed, so the primary thing I'd like to have updated in the new resolution is five members on the committee. So if there's any questions or not, I would like to have a consensus to have?
Anything else you want to do with that, with the resolution creating that committee?
No, there was some discussion about the name of it, but at this point, I think just changing it to five would stagger.
I have to prepare one, and you can, I'll put on, if you ask me to prepare it?
We'll prepare.
And I'll put it on agenda, that's the consensus of the board.
Please do.
I'll leave from Stephanie the current terms, so we can make sure that the terms are lined up with the five members.
Right, right. And the second thing is, and I don't want to steal Ken's thunder, but the Ways and Means Committee with their review of what happened and went right last year and what had to be changed for this year was just an excellent meeting, so I, Ken will talk more about it, I just wanted to throw that comment out. Good job, Ways and Means.
All right, thank you. Ken?
Just back going off of that is, we did, because we talked a lot last year about looking at the process and how we do our budget, and what can we do to improve it. And we can now show everybody, whoever wants it, you know, we now have basically a calendar of events that happen throughout the year, and which was put together by the Ways and Means Committee, and that's what was our starting point from last year, and this is what we challenged ourselves, or the committee challenged themselves on at our last meeting. And at that, we talked about what are those items that went well, what items need improvement, and what are some new items we didn't even think about? And we came up with basically half a dozen each of those categories. So the Ways and Means Committee will continue to keep looking at that process and how do we make it better. I'm looking forward to working with the new chairperson of the Ways and Means Committee for it. So, and the only other thing I had was I wanted to thank Dick and Stephanie and the admin for a great job clearing the roads.
Yes.
And doing all that hard work, and you guys are on top of it, and great job. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sean?
No, we're going to defer to, my boards and commissions are all represented, and I let them report. Thank you.
Real quick, we've been participating in the Doylestown Dart. And if you know, the Doylestown Dart is that, the bus goes around, there are two of them now. We started our involvement with them, you know, a few years ago. We contributed financially, and we've been contributing ideas and our processes. Stephanie and I have been, you know, we did, we went through the marketing plan and so on. But we had a nice update the other day. In 2012, the ridership for the Dart was nine thousand seven hundred and nine people. In 2015, that nine thousand is now twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand. So the Dart has done an amazing job in customer service and increasing its ridership and becoming more accessible and more available to mostly our senior population and trending now to the Delaware Valley University population. So I wanted to share that with you, because one of the things that has come up is that with our summer concert series, we'll all be in Doylestown Central Park at the Covenant Bank Campus Theater. So the idea is the Dart would act as the transportation vehicle, vehicles, from the borough to the township. And there is money in their budget for that, so we wouldn't have to be paying for it, and we can share that expense if necessary with the borough. So summer concert series, Dart, we're going to mesh those two and get a plan in place. So I just wanted to tell the world that the Dart is a viable means of transportation in this community and has become a very vital service as well.
Just a question, did they talk about how much of that growth was due to the Delaware University students? Because I know they went down there and are bringing them back up into town, and that was an extension?
They do, they do have a breakdown of all the general public, riders and students, seniors, days, times, and all that. It's a little more complicated than just?
Yeah, okay.
But I have that, if you want to take a look at it.
Good.
All right, that's all I have. And again, I commend our Public Works Department for amazing job in cleaning our roads and keeping us all safe, and our police department, too, whom I understand were out this morning because, you know, melting and freezing and many, you have to be careful, everybody, the snow melts and then it freezes, so there was a lot of incidents today, incidences today in Doylestown Township because of a driver mishap. All right, that's all I got. New business, trash haul permits for 2016. I promise you, this is the last thing before we get to why you're all here.
Just need the Board of Supervisors to approve allowing us to issue the licenses for the trash haulers for this year. You have memo from the staff listing the various haulers that have requested to pick up residential and commercial in the township.
All right, so all of these are approved for?
Yes, they've met all the requirements.
Is there a motion to approve?
Question. Related to the trash carriers.
You need to identify yourself.
Okay, Mark Shiner, and basically, two questions. One, is there any guidelines on what hours they can pick up?
Six p.m. to six p.m.
Yeah, but they're there earlier than that in our neighborhood.
If they're there earlier than that, you need to let us know. We will communicate with our police department, and they will be available.
It's 5:52 this week. Woke me up.
They will, they will be available to, to talk to the driver on that day and time.
Yeah.
But it's got to be specific.
The other thing is, in our development, is probably four, I think at least three, if not four, carriers coming in basically almost every day of the week. It's, it's, Sunday night, the cans go out, and they're all the way out till Saturday. Is there any thought about aligning pickup days?
You can do that neighborhood by neighborhood. Your neighbors can get together and decide on one hauler, if that's what you want to do. That way, you have one hauler coming in.
But why don't, why don't it be better to say, you know, this area picks up, you know, Monday, Thursday, whatever?
Because each of the haulers have their own routes for the, we have private contracts, so everybody picks their own. It's a laissez-faire system, so each of the haulers?
There's cans out all the time.
We don't have regulatory authority any longer, other than for the registration component hours.
But there's a lot of neighborhoods that have done that, that have come together and decided on one. decided on one trash pickup and negotiated their own pricing too, as a result of that, so.
Okay, yeah, that's easy enough to do. We have emails of everybody, we can, we can...
Yep, there you go.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
No, we did not. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right, moving on to Boards of Commissions' presentation. See you, Jeffrey. From the zoning hearing board first. Is there some order to this, or did you just like pull them out of the...
Ask who wants to go first.
We have, starting with a Z.
No!
It's a special request. There was a special request. Certain people have...
No, I had spoken to Margaret earlier, and I asked her if I could get on first, because as you all know, Drew in the past has been very sensitive about the board because of the hearings that we have, and he really didn't want to come to the meetings. I didn't always agree with it, but I felt out of courtesy, we, you know, we should be here. Just to give you a brief summary of what we've done in the past and going forward. As everyone knows, past year, it was pretty much your normal zoning hearing board meetings, sign variances, in-law suites, nothing major, except for the big one was obviously the Oscar Hammerstein property, which to me was a very interesting hearing. It was, the thing that impressed me is the number of residents in the township that came out and participated in that hearing. I know it makes it easier for us as a board to hear all the residents' input, whether positive or negative, it helps us to make a decision, and I really applaud the people coming out for that. Going forward in 2016, we have a couple of sensitive issues that will be coming up shortly. We did have our last meeting, and I bring this to the board, maybe you're working on this now, we had, the Redner Shopping Center came in for a sign variance, which we did approve, which led to a discussion with the board members and our solicitor about the future of signage. A number of the townships are going to these electronic signs, movable signs, and we were wondering, is the township looking at the sign ordinance going forward? Because we feel we're going to start getting more, whether it be shopping centers or individual businesses, that will want to expand their signs.
That's all.
I was just going to...
Sit down for, sit down for a minute, because Stephanie will tell you the horrors.
Well, I'm not going to, you want to stay for the next presentation from Judy Hendricks, who's chairman of the Planning Commission. She decided to go with that one first and then the bike hike one, because that's always a little bit more interesting. But the sign ordinance with the recent Supreme Court decision is under review by our Planning Commission at the present time, so you will see a, and the board will too, revised ordinance probably later this year.
Good, okay, that would probably solve a lot of issues. We feel that's going to be happening, so make it easier for us.
Did you get a copy of the Supreme Court decision?
No, but Bill Bowler has a copy of it, and he's going to share it with us.
Very interesting.
Yeah, he did mention it, and he's going to share it at our next meeting. And also, our new member, Mitch Aglow, fit in very well, and he's doing very nicely, and thank you for that appointment.
Thanks, Bill. And Planning Commission?
Well, keep it short. That was a good segue, because that's one of our big projects that we're doing outside of our, I hit the down? That's what I do? Okay. All right, so this is, how come it's not up there? Oh, he sets it up, okay. All right, sorry about that. One of the big things that we are working on is the, this is our members, but one of the things that we are working on very heavily is we've got a number of workshop sessions that we're working on the sign ordinance, and the good news is, it looks like we're going to be able to simplify that tremendously, going to a chart format and hopefully making it a whole lot easier to work with, and we've been working with Sinclair on that as well, so I think that's really going to be moving ahead this year, and you'll be seeing that soon. This is our 2015 plan and ordinance reviews that we've done, and pretty much follows the last couple of years. There's nothing that's profoundly different, but we, one of the bigger things is working with the Bucks County Planning Commission on the Cross Keys Area Study, and also with New Britton Borough on our Business 202 Corridor. That's something that we're really branching out beyond the township limits and working with them, and that's one thing that we do a lot of, is trying to work with the neighboring communities and, you know, work together. We worked on a little, a little view presentation for Delaware Valley, for Doylestown TV, and it was kind of a, I don't know, I think it's a little clumsy, but we're getting there. So that was one of the things that we're, we're trying to work on with the video that explains what the role of the Planning Commission is to the public. And our projects for next year, or this year, are, you know, continuing with that sign ordinance amendment, and that's well on its way. We're working pretty hard on that. And then our typical, you know, working with SADO amendments to zoning, we have a few issues with the zoning ordinance that we really want to look at in terms of different districts, and we've had some projects come up that are making that something that we really have to look at. And the Business Corridor again, and the Bucks County Planning Commission for Cross Keys, and Cross Keys is interesting because it's four townships involved in that. And that's about it. That's a quick little summary of where we are.
Yeah, thank you, Judy.
And now I can just go right into Bike and Hike. Can I just...
Yes, Dave.
Is it the next thing? Down?
You need, you need Ms. Goldman for this?
No, Judy's going to do it as vice chair.
I usually share it well, so I always think somebody from our community...
It's really nice. It's nice to see you.
Yeah, it's nice.
I was looking forward to hearing from you.
She's a good delegator. Our, our committee is quite large, and this is a really interesting group of people because it involves Doylestown, the township, the borough, and members of, at large, from several different communities, and we have a lot of really good attendance to these meetings. And it's been great to watch, you know, everybody work together on these different projects. Here's our map, and it's growing. This is, this hasn't been updated, this is from September of 2014, so it needs another update, but it's getting there, and we're working very hard on connecting the dots through town. We've had trail dedications at the Nishamity Creek and at Cover Bridge Park. That was a really nice, in September, late September, we do our Trail Awareness Day, and that's, we've had good turnout for that, of kids and people going around and finding out more about what trails are available for biking and walking, and there's been a good mix of people for that. We had a very exciting installation of a new bridge at, on the Peace Valley Trail at Cover Bridge Park, and it was very exciting to watch that come in. It was a prefabricated bridge that came in on a big crane, and, you know, it's always fun to see construction. The project's underway, we've received a lot of grants last year, so these things are underway, the Lower State Road, Nishamity Greenway, and the Heritage Trail, working on those, and that design work has been ongoing. It's going to start into implementation this spring and summer for a lot of those projects and ongoing into the future. So get out there and check them out.
Thank you.
Barb, I just would always like to say...
Come on up.
He'll yell at me if I'm coming. All right, Lynn Goldman, chairman of the Bike and Hike. I just want to thank the board, because they're very supportive on what we do, and, you know, there's a lot of times before when we started these projects, there would always be neighbors coming out saying, "We don't want, we don't want the bike hike trail in our backyard." So now, as it turns out, I would say, it's rare when we have someone who doesn't want the bike and hike in their backyard, but unfortunately, I think this year may, we may be finding someone who is not so interested in having an important trail, and so I'm hoping that we get your support again, as you have in the past, and I think as the neighborhoods, those who have the trail, would back us up and say, "It only benefits the community and increases their values." So thank you for your support.
Just a quick question around that.
Sure.
Other than the three that are currently being designed and worked on that you have in process, what is the plan for the next five years? Do you have a plan for where it's going to go?
Well, like where specifically it's going to go? I would say that, well, you've been to a few of our meetings, but really, we have several different paths out there that we're always working on and always thinking, like, you know, a personal favorite is Pebble Hill Road. Well, that is so far on the back burner, that that's not something that is a priority, because there's not a grant out there, there's not the interest that's showing out there. And then we'll have another one, such as the one that right now is going by the Y, you know. That's always been a priority for us, but the money wasn't there, so we had to put that off. But always, we've been thinking how we're going to connect those trails along the way. Then there's also a huge group that wants to make it to Peace Valley Park. So that's an ongoing project, and there's several routes for that. So it really does, we do, we do listen to neighborhood chatter, and if we get people coming in, you know, it does help our board to react, and so we welcome people coming and kind of throwing in their voices and getting neighborhood support, but that's how we go along. So there's always a project, retirement is not in our future right now. So, but there is no list specifically, we go with the flow.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay? Anybody else? Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
And always thank Dick, always.
Thank you, Judy, thank you, Lynn. Okay, Doylestown Dog Park Advisory Committee, Dave Hanson. A.K.A. Doc Hanson.
Got a very short presentation. Can I give you a little idea of what we did in 2015, what we're planning to do in 2016? Last year, we did our Barkminster event. We saw the installation of the final two water fountains out at the park, so we have a nice spray fountain for the large dog area, and the final fountain in the rotation area. We did photo float at Fanny Chapman, which was a huge success, and what we're hoping to do is have that event again this year. We have a tentative schedule, and we have to approach the Fanny Board for permission. We've seen the construction of the shade structures out at the dog park. There is one shade structure in the small dog park, and there's one shade structure in the large dog park. We did some investigation into enhancing security at the park, and I'd also like to give a special thanks to Feeny's Nursery, because they donated four trees, four maple trees to the park last year. And our township liaison, Karen Sweeney, has had the opportunity to make presentations at the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors, Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, and the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. Those presentations were related to the operation, maintenance, and orientations that we provide for the dog park and the public. So for 2016, we're going to do Barkminster again, and we're going to add a couple of features. We're doing a stop and swap toy exchange, so you people who have your dogs and have more toys than you know what to do with, you bring them to the park and you're going to have a swap meet. Anything that is not swapped is going to be donated to a rescues. Then we're also doing the parking spot raffle. Previously, we've done that in December. We're now doing the parking spot at Barkminster, and basically, that's two designated parking spaces at the park, one for large dog, one for small dog, and basically, it goes to the highest bidder. It's a fundraiser. Like I said, we were trying, hopefully going to do Fanny Float again at September after Fanny Chapman closes to the public at Labor Day. We're looking forward to the Halloween Annual Costume Party that this year will be in Central Park, and the Dog Park Advisory Board and members participate and support the Halloween program we have for many years. Installation, approval and installation of video monitoring system and gate configuration changes to enhance security at the park. We're going to continue our orientation and registration process. We have a program together that educates individuals on canine behavior and people behavior too, related to the dog park, and we have those orientations at least 10 times a year. So on average, we have 18 people show up for each one of them. Sometimes it's as many as 28. And our current membership is about 300 families, so that gives you some idea of how many people are there. 2016, it will be the fourth anniversary of the dog park.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Environmental Advisory Committee.
Good evening, once again. I have, over the past several years, been following some very high-tech presentations. When I was called upon and I brought my blackboard, a piece of chalk, and did some stick figures, I thought, maybe I should update these things this year. So I thought I was going to have two sock puppets and perhaps make a presentation. Thought about it, I had an epiphany, and I thought, you know what, let's get high-tech. I'm not going to play with that thing, because I'll neuter North Korea if I do. So I'm standing over here, as in all good movie theaters, silence your cell phones, there will be no texting or communication while we're giving the presentation. Hit it!
Hello.
Get the puppets.
Get the puppet.
I don't know.
Why isn't it doing it? See?
There we go. No pressure now.
No pressure. You never knew it was coming. I want to thank, thank everybody for, once again, your support at the EAC Committee, and I'm going all the way down, including this august body of supervisors, Dick, the clerical staff, the maintenance people. You talked about the bike paths and hike paths. I took a walk at Peace Valley Park on Saturday for a bird walk. Terrible. No snow removal, no dog walking, no bikes, no hikers, terrible. Our system of parks, fantastic. Great job, Dick. All your people, great. Okay, what did we do in 2015? Number one was our native demonstration garden. We had a lot of representatives from Pico came out, we had a lot of volunteers from the township, other townships came on board to help us with it, to demonstrate native plants and how important they are for the residents and enjoying native plants instead of Bradford pears, burning bush, and all of the rest of the invasive things. This year, last year, Arbor Day. We received, again, a lot of support with the Tree City Award. A lot of people came out, a couple of supervisors helped us, we enjoyed it, it was fun. We've always liked to make it light, and we're going to continue it again next year. Go ahead. Bird on a Wire, Burke and Kestrel Award. This was a statewide, I don't know who that guy is on the right, but he's, you know, we received an award from the state. Audubon has the best bird town in the state of Pennsylvania, and that was a nice accomplishment, and that painting is on display here at the township. Next. Conservation Organization of the Year from Bucks County Conservation District. Hit it. Okay, there we are at the Commissioners' Meeting. You were there. It was a very prestigious event to get the Commissioners to give us an award. We worked real hard at it. The committee that is on our, all of members of our committee are hardworking and dedicated. Okay. All right. And the tree vitalization grant for 2015. That was in Central Park and also Bridge Point Park, and we're going to continue that in association with Arbor Day. All right. Greatest that was? We had the great backyard bird count, we had the EAC Summit, we had, I think, 17 different townships met here from Bucks County and exchanged ideas back and forth on how we could improve the environment for each and individual township. The Fall and Spring Township Nature Walks led by yours truly was well-attended, and a lot of people are talking about coming out for April, which is where we're going to run some more. And the extension of the Bluebird Nest Box Trail... And the extension of the Bluebird Nest Box Trail through new areas. Warrington Township has agreed to extend the Bluebird Trail from Bristol Road all the way to County Lineburg. So we're going to have an extension all the way out. Okay, that was 2015. 2016, we have put in the township newsletter a questionnaire about a community garden. Let's show you what one looks like. We have an awful lot of people, and the gentleman here was talking about building these apartment townhouses. We're trying to find out how much interest is there for people who do not have property to build or maintain a garden. So we're sending questionnaires out. I've been to probably a dozen different community gardens and how they function. A lot of support for them. As a matter of fact, Buckingham Township's got one, Britain's got one, Lower Mayfield's got one. And the people I talked to said it just keeps growing and growing. We've got the site, now we have to find out how much support people want to do it. Okay, next, please. The Wildlife Habitat Certification. We have homeowners who now, with the support from Bird on a Wire program, that are creating habitat in their own backyards. Pollination, nest boxes, native plants, and we're working on enlarging that whole program throughout the township. Next, please. Okay, Monarch Butterfly Preserve. Monarch butterflies, as you know, are in deep trouble because of their food supply, which is milkweed. A lot of people do not plant milkweed. They consider it because it's got that word "weed" at the end of it as a noxious plant. It's not. The population of monarch butterflies is decreasing tremendously. We are going to set up a monarch waste station, so to speak, in the new meadow. Okay. Next, please. The Cavity Nest Box Program. We have had phenomenal success with this, especially over the last five years. All the data that I've collected, I've sent to Cornell University in New York, and they are keeping the stats on the number of birds fledged, nested, of all the species. This is a picture, just to show even when they're not nesting, in this one box, there were nine adult bluebirds wintering. They're all face, these are all heads. All the way around here. That's an adult sitting up top. Tree swallows, that's a gray-faced switchhalla sitting up there. You've seen the boxes, I hope, when you're out on the trails. We've got more of them going in. And again, without my friends at maintenance, it would be a job I couldn't do. Next, please. The Spring and Fall Township Nature Walks. I have a lot of fun with this, because there's a lot of birds that people have never seen before. The only thing I was, I was concerned, the first time we announced it. Now, you say, we're going to have a bird walk, it's going to be in April, we keep talking about it and talking about it, we get 40 people showing up and two have binoculars. And I'm wondering, what did you think you were going to look at? But we had some great results. Cedar Waxwings, Roast Rested Growspeaks, from here to you. The people just were like, wow! You know? And we want to continue that. So that will continue. Next, please. And the Central Park Meadow Restoration. This is one that I know Ken and I are very interested in, Shaw now, to create a meadow. We had, and I'm not going to get involved in the economics, but from what I understood, our mowing bills, year after year after year, just to cut grass, was astronomical. So it just, I just couldn't understand, why not take a portion of that, let it go fallow, mow it once a year to keep down multi-floor rows and raspberry and things like that? And with that, we get to get meadow arcs, bobolinks, throated hummingbirds, and all of the plants that that meadow will bring to the township. I thought it was another link into habitat that we didn't have before. We have wetlands, we have the pond now. We've got hearts woods, which is a mature deciduous woods. We've got the wetlands down from Kids Castle, where it crosses the creek. So we're putting together a whole concept, and this, I'm looking forward to seeing next spring where it comes. And again, with the mowing schedule, Peace Valley Park, terrible. It's grown, I mean, they just don't do anything, and they keep talking about what they can't do. We can do it all. And next. And we are going to continue with the native plant presentation, climate change action plan, and this one is in the latest newsletter, the record tree inventory. We're putting it out to the residents. If you have a tree, native, that you think merits some consideration, we're going to come out, look at it, measure it, at the diameter breast height, DBH, and record the size of these. There were some biggies in the township. There you go. You got, yeah, you got one. So based on that, we've got a very busy program coming up. We've got great people, Janine, Marty Brooks, Don Richardson, Tanya, and, and again, thanks for the latest addition, Ann Woodbury. We've got Sean Zablaski. We've got seven hard-working people on our board, and we thank you very much for all your consideration.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Where's your community garden?
If you know where the 202 Parkway and Lower State Road, if you get onto the hike and bike path and proceed toward Bristol Road on the left-hand side, it's that parcel that Delve College has got in Alfalfa right now. Full sun. It's great. The logistics are going to be a problem. We need a place to park, we have to come up with the size of the plots, whether or not people are willing to commit to a one- or two-season growing period. But these are things we're working on. But we'll see, you know, how it works out. Any other questions?
Yes, Ray, you're responsible for that tree ring right down there. You want to take a minute and a half and explain it?
Oh, yes, yeah. When, when I was out on a bird walk on the new path going toward the Lower State Road and the sewage treatment plant off of the hike and bike, you know where I am? Okay. Ann Rhodes and I came upon this red oak that had been cut, and it was a tremendous stump. And we looked at it, looked at it, and we said, you know, this has got some girth to it. Let's find out more about it. So I talked to Dick, Dick Gutbich and Rick, and they went out and they cut a wedge of it. Ann Rhodes took the wedge to her place. She meticulously counted every single ring in that tree, and there's over 200 years of American history in this, starting, you know, July 4, 1976, 1818, Doylestown Township established, all the way up to, you know, the celebration of the First Earth Day, Americans in space. It's fantastic. So we have some magnificent specimens of trees. And I was glad that the township allowed us to have it on a permanent display, because I think it speaks well for what we want to do.
Yep.
Once again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We like your bells and whistles presentation. We're going to expect it again next year.
I can get rid of the sock puppets, right?
Yeah. All right. Next is Friends of Kids Castle Committee, Joe Salvati.
Hello, everyone. Great job, Ray. His enthusiasm is infectious, and you do a hell of a job. Something to look up to, so. I have a video here, so I won't really need to do much talking.
You're trying to show Ray what he is expecting next year from him?
We always keep the bar high. Hopefully, this'll, this'll work here.
Oh, boy.
[mimicking a bell]
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 Any questions?
Put that on the TV channel?
Uh huh.
Go put it on the TV channel. You give us that.
Yeah, yeah, I got a copy.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and I want to thank the, uh, staff and the administration who really, really works hard all the time to help us get everything done, so, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Dick Bach, DTMA.
Don't go away. What's do we do? Just that one?
Yep.
All right, Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, we bring you the water that you drink and use. The Authority, Richard John, the Director, Scott Mealy, the Water Superintendent, he and his guys do a fantastic job maintaining the system, the equipment, the trucks, everything we have, also conforming with all the requirements of our friends in the government for, uh, proper maintenance of the system and maintaining clean water. Fred, Rich, and Donna, our professional staff, the Board of Directors, Dick Bach, Ed Harvey, Ed Hegi, Frank LaRosa, and Joe Van Houten, who just joined. A special word of thanks to Ron May. Ron was on the board for nineteen years, he was the chairman for fourteen years, he retired last month for some family things, we told him he wasn't really allowed to retire, he has to come back to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do. A special thanks to Rick Colallo for his work with us as his liaison with the township supervisors. The Authority is financially sound, the water rates remained unchanged for 2016, this is the second year that we are at the rate where we are now, this confirms that we are a profitable organization, we continue to do a good job, we work with the DEP and the DRPC, the permit holders, and we work with our neighbors in seeking solutions to common water utility programs. In Doylestown Township, we have two thousand six hundred and one customers, individual customers. We do have working agreements with Doylestown Borough, New Britain Township, New Britain Borough, Plumstead Township, Buckingham Township, Warrington Township, we provide water in bulk to Plumstead Township for Patriot Ridge and Carriage Hill and Bailey's Corner, to Child's Instant Homes, to Doylestown Commons, to New Britain Borough and the Shammany Manor Complex, and we have some standalone customers in Cross Keys, Pools Corners, Buckingham Township, Fountainville, and Warrington Township. So the total customer count is four thousand four hundred. There are several construction projects that are underway and will add new customers. This is Bailey Square, the corner of 113 and Furry Road, commercial building with either six or eight tenants depending upon this area asked for by the tenants, we extended our main across 113 into that area so that the water could be provided, exactly, this is in Plumstead Township. Along with that is Patriot Ridge. Patriot Ridge is, if you'll excuse the expression, our cash cow. Patriot Ridge was authorized, four hundred and sixty-three residential units, so far three hundred and sixty-seven have been hooked up, we received the tap-in fees for each of those homes in that development, since, uh, Dick, four years? About four years, the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority has received about seven hundred and thirty thousand in tap-in fees from Patriot Ridge. Again, there are four hundred and sixty-three approved, I kinda looked lovingly at the fact that just north of Patriot Ridge is a very large open field, in that open field which is currently being used for some tree planting, there are signs for Patriot Ridge directing to Patriot Ridge, which gives us the hope that there will, could be someday some additional homes in that area. Stone Manor Barn on Old Dublin Pike, north of the shopping center, seven carriage homes, one barn, and one manor home, all of which are under construction now, water has been extended into that area from Old Dublin Pike. Doylestown Green, again, Old Dublin Pike, just north of the shopping center, homes are under construction, there are, I think, four which have been built and are available for sale, and I frankly don't remember the count, but I'm assuming it's seven or eight. There will be homes, they are still under construction. Cassabella, four units on Sandy Ridge Road, they, obviously you can tell from the picture, there's nothing being done at the moment, but everything's been approved, the, in addition to installing the water for the four homes, our contract with the developer had us put a main, extend the main across Sandy Ridge Road a little bit farther, so we can therefore hook up some more people. This is Hidden Meadows in New Britain Township, behind the old furniture factory, and it kinda works with the next slide, which is the New Britain, New Britain Carter. The corner of, the Delver Valley College, the university is on the left. This is an extension, the plan is, and it is being developed and is underway, to make that area along 202 a viable commercial and residential area, extending from here to Sandy Ridge Road to the previous slide, which is now Hidden Meadows, which will be forty-one units behind the old factory. Many names, Silver Maple on Lower State Road at the bypass, there are seven, ten residential units, there is also a commercial building, the commercial building is operational and it appears that the residential's will very shortly be occupied. Town's Edge, after tonight's earlier demonstration, there will be some changes on this one, the original plan was for four homes redo, I mean, four homes redo, seven homes redo the barn and the manor home, as you saw in tonight's presentation, that has changed, but in any event, there will be some construction and some water usage there. Corner of Bristol Road and...
Lower State.
Lower State Road. Toll Brothers Development, forty-one homes behind that old home there, which also will be served by our water system, will be extending the main from the Brinker Track on Lower State Road out to that area at the corner of Bristol Road and Lower State Road. Now, for a moment of levity, a fifty-year-old sign, it's been painted several times in the last number of years, this is the corner of York Road and Swamp Road, Route 113. Development, Rick, will not continue depending upon some things that are happening, but it's, we've really had some progress, our engineer has been talking to the engineer and the developer, they are very interested in either renovating an existing well or drilling a new well and also getting water. Dick John continues to work with the DEP, you remember several years ago, we had a grant from the DEP to extend water out into that area to connect to the Buckingham Township system and to help the people who have the untenable water in that area. At this point, DEP has indicated that they have interest in that, and we certainly hope they do, because that would give us not just an extension of main, but many new customers as well. We use, we produce or use about nine hundred and sixty-one thousands of gallons of water every day, there's been a study that shows that we could use as much as four million gallons a day without impacting the groundwater capacity, so we have plenty of room to grow. The previous numbers of slides with the pictures are a very real commitment from developers who tell us that they really understand the need and the worth of having a public water system in the new units, in the new homes. There has been an agreement which is expiring, has expired between Doylestown Township, Doylestown Borough, and our Authority, that any water that we use, we call it wheeling charges, where we would flow water through the Doylestown Borough system to reach our customers, that we did not have direct lines, our engineer has now changed our system so that we have reduced that significantly, I can tell you that it was a very, very substantial fee that we paid the Doylestown Borough to have that water go from our system through their system back into our system. That volume has been reduced very, very substantially, hopefully, we will eventually cut it off completely, I know, Rick, just hang in there, I'll keep saying that. The, this is a statement on why, unfortunately, you can't read it from this screen, but why we need public water, the fact that if you have public water, you get clean water, it's always there, it's available every day, all day, our system and every public water system is set up that in the event of a power failure, you still have water, we have water from tanks which flows under pressure, we also have generators at all of our well sites, so that if there is a power failure, we will still provide water. One of the things that has always concerned me is why people who have public water available did not take advantage of that, I recently called Bueller Well Drilling in Warrington to ask them what the fee would be to drill a well, just an average figure, I'm not looking for specifics, I need to know what would it cost if I lived in Doylestown Township and I had to drill a well. The figure was a minimum of ten thousand dollars, that's to drill a hole in the ground, you're then going to pay to have that system, that new well hooked up with the pumps and so forth to your house, that figure is not particularly distant from what it would cost to hook up to a public water system. We have water covering a fairly extensive part of the residential areas of Doylestown Township, those people who live along that, along those mains can hook up to the system and get the advantage of clean water, of water available at all times, fire protection, fire protection is something that we don't talk about enough, we really should, if, for example, you were to speak to the owner of Arvinite Corporation, several years ago, within weeks of the main being installed out Old Eastern Road, Arvinite had a fire, the fire company trucks pull up to the fire hydrant hookup and start spraying water, without that hydrant, they would have been dependent upon tank trucks coming in from various places. Fire companies are very happy to see public water, because public water includes hydrants, so that helps them as far as the speed of getting to the fire and controlling the fire. Also, a very limited but worthwhile benefit, if you have public water, your insurance company provides a small rate for homeowners, if not very substantial, for commercial businesses, it can be substantial, a credit for your insurance because you have public water. That statement, they have, again, this is, I just, we have public water and we have mains available, the Doylestown Township Municipal Association Authority would ask only one action by the township supervisors, that phrase is not gonna go away, folks. Mandatory hookups would be that anyone who has a property which is on a main or on a main which is then installed would be required to hook up to the system to take public water. I mentioned that the developers with whom we work when we have new developments are all very, very convinced that it's a sales opportunity for them, it's a very positive for people who have a public water hookup in their homes, if at some point in the future you're going to sell your home and you don't have public water, it could be a detriment. Also, we have several areas in Doylestown Township, there was some information earlier about a new public sewer system being extended, that's a very expensive proposition, hooking up for water is not as expensive, but at the same time, either public water or public sewer is a real positive in the future if you sell your home. If you talk to, for example, I showed that picture of the corner of Lower State and Bristol Roads, Toll Brothers will be building forty-one homes, Toll Brothers looks for public water in any development in which they're involved, they understand that it is a very positive thing. But again, Doylestown Township Municipal Authority is a profitable entity, we do a good job, we have great water, our guys that do the work really do a sensational job, Dick adds the Authority to one of his many hats here, and we thank him for that, and you, the supervisors, we thank you for your support.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you, next is the, um, the Public Park and Rec Board, John Bray. Hi, John.
Good evening. I'm glad to say that I'm a firm supporter of the municipal authority, we enjoy public water, and we have the fire hydrant in our front yard, it's all good. So this year, a lot has gone on, we're planning some interesting projects and programs for 2016. First, our board, we have an active board, Jan and Blythe are both here, our Vice Chair and Secretary, Sean is our liaison, and Karen Sweeney is our Park and Rec Director, and not much of this would happen without Karen, so although she's not here tonight, we'd certainly like to express our appreciation for her hard work. We have a number of events that are annual events, a number of the things that are in our presentation have been addressed by other boards or commissions, so I'll just skip through those, but Touch a Truck is a, is a very, it's a fun event, it's very popular with little kids, and we'll be happy to have that again this year, Home Run Derby also in May, the Fishing Derby, which is in June, all lots of fun. Jof Salvetti with Kids Castle talked about the golf outing, it was a big success this past year, as the economy is good, so goes the golf outing, and so, we're hoping for another good year with the golf outing. Big news here in Central Park, we have a new amphitheater, a structure, a stage, a place for performances, so during this past year, the funds were approved, we built it, we cut the ribbon, our first event was the Quakertown Band, there's additional funding available from naming rights, Covenant Bank had, has offered, and their offer's been accepted to sponsor our amphitheater, and so we're working hard on using our new stage and taking advantage of their patronage and renting space for additional revenue. Here's a picture of the Quakertown Band, again, our first concert, the acoustics are great, and we enjoyed this first concert, and I know we'll enjoy many to come. There's our sign, Covenant Bank, we've branded our amphitheater, and we'll make good use of the funds that they've made available for us. The Thompson Organization has agreed to step up their sponsorship of our programs, and so the Performing Arts Series will be the Thompson Performing Arts Series this summer. So they've, they've provided, as I mentioned, a nice amount of additional funding, we have a marketing plan that's being developed for proper signage to promote their patronage, our Parks and Rec Director is beginning to schedule our concerts for the summer, and just incidentally Doylestown Borough has decided not to participate this year, so all of our concerts will be on our new stage. We're thinking about a spring jazz concert, and we have additional concerts that we're looking to schedule with CB Cares, and we're looking for a way to hold our fireworks this year in the amphitheater rather than out on the, out on the field. Our program guide was awarded first place by the Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors in December of this past year, we have a great program guide, does a good job of informing our citizens about what's going on. Ms. Lyons has been selected as the recipient of the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society Local Government Award, so we'll be placked again next March, very, very nice. The Dog Park has been discussed, so I'll skip through all the Dog Park and Barkmeister and Fido Flo events. This year, the tennis courts were blended, and you're probably wondering, how does one go about blending a tennis court? Well, we painted some extra lines on Courts Four and Five to expand the usage for training children, and we're thinking about some more lines on our courts for pickleball, pickleball is a very popular sport that's kind of gaining, gaining a lot of enthusiastic participants, and so we think we've figured out a way to do that. The Century Enrichment Trail is on target for completion this year, pathways have been complete, we have nine pods which we purchased, and they'll be installed once we receive some buffing materials. I'm not gonna explain what buffing materials are, but suffice it to say, they're in short supply and critical for the installation of our pods, hopefully, the national shortage of buffing materials will be resolved soon. Kids Castle, I'm not gonna spend too much time, since Joe had such a terrific presentation, but it's hard to imagine our park without Kids Castle, it's an amazing place for kids, and we're glad to assist with the events and the new programs at Kids Castle. Our goals for 2016, we are looking to improve Sowerman Park, and I'd like to just take a moment to thank Dick John or add my thanks to all the other boards and commissions who he assists. Our township staff, headed by Dick, does an awful lot for us as well as for the other boards and commissions, and we certainly appreciate that. As I mentioned, the Thompson Performing Arts Series will have extended performances by adding some additional organizations to the folks using our facility, our golf outing, a new event, which is a family fun and fitness day, which will involve more than nine hundred children, the USTA blended lines to the courts, which I mentioned, pickleball I mentioned, the sensory trail, marketing the amphitheater, really promoting our new facility, working with the EAC for the Butterfly Preserve, and just incidentally, no one enjoys our concerts more than Ray, no dancing this year, Ray, we've had complaints, we've had complaints, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to work on that, and we'll be prioritizing our capital fundraising goals. We think our quality of life in Doylestown Township is very high, and we know that our parks and recreational opportunities are a big part of that, we thank the supervisors for your support.
Thank you, John. On your board, good work. Okay, Public Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, you have been spoken, is that you, Joe?
That would be me.
Okay. You can play the new guy and like, be brief.
I'll be very brief.
I'm just the new guy.
First thing I'm gonna do, however, is I'm gonna take back, Rick, I might rethink renaming the committee, getting the A in front, so we can be first, instead of last going forward. There's not a lot of aesthetically pleasing slides that go along with the disposal of sewage, so I've decided to pass on that part tonight, besides the fact that this was put on me yesterday afternoon. I would like to start off, though, by saying that I want to extend a thanks to the Chairman that's been running our committee for years, Ed Harvey, he put a tremendous amount of work and effort into running the committee, and is probably mostly responsible for the fact that we finally have brought... mostly responsible for the fact that we finally have brought not only 10 years of this current committee, but 20 years of work to fruition with the completion of the Pebble Ridge Project. So I'd like to extend his thanks to him for all the guidance he's given us over the years as he's now decided to put his efforts into other areas of the township. With regards to 2015, obviously, everybody heard this evening, we are finally going to have, be breaking ground hopefully sometime in 2016 on the new sewer project, which has been a long time in the making. I will tell you this, I will have slides next year at this point in time to show you as we're progressing along with that project. Our goals for 2016, we will be using the same thought process, the same processes to take a look at some other areas of the township that may also be able to benefit from public sewers in the future. And that is my presentation.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to the Board and Telecommunications Advisory Board, Ed. Back there hiding. Ed.
I will try to keep this relatively brief, and Joe Salvati has set a rather high bar, which is amazing that the TAB group doesn't do its own video, but since that's the main thing that we do. Anyway, what we're about, our mission is frankly to advise the board and staff regarding communications issues. So this covers a wide range of areas. The television station is certainly a part of it, but we also are involved in social media. We've been involved in the website. The reason you have internet access in this room and other parts of this building is because the TAB group has put that together. So there's all kinds of communications needs that we've worked at for the township. The number two mission is that not only do we have a TV station, but we have to operate it. So we spend a lot of time, when I'm in the back room, I'm operating along with the staff from the township that helps, but I'm spending a lot of time trying to find programming and deal with best practices and things of that sort. Lastly, and something that we have spent a lot of time for the last two or three years, we negotiate with the cable franchise providers. We've just, as you'll see, closed an agreement with Comcast. You'll see that in a minute, but it took a long time. We have an authorized strength of five members. We're up to three at this point, and there are two that we've been looking for people for about two years and about a year, and we've not found them. Ryan is our liaison, and we meet monthly, second Monday, 6:30. And anyone who would like, please feel free to come. In 2015, we have a story of continued growth in most of the things that we do. Our web streaming, which you may remember we authorized, I think, maybe three years ago. We use it at this point principally to rebroadcast Board of Supervisor meetings. That usership just keeps going up. It's not a huge growth, 17 and a half percent, 14 percent, but 16,000 views this year is not minor. So there are plenty of people that are going into that site and looking at the videos that we have up there. We have continued growth in social media, and in fact, those growths are rather spectacular. We're up to 1,400 likes on Facebook and 1,600 followers on Twitter, and those are 50 percent, 60 percent growth rates. So that's all growing very, very handsomely. I would say the main reason for that is there's a lot of postings that the township does, and those postings, many of them include pictures, and pictures grab people's eyes, and I think that helps the whole process. We also focus a lot on having locally produced, locally sourced video showings. Judy Hendrickson mentioned earlier a piece on the Planning Commission, which we did in this past year. But we've managed through a lot of efforts like that to grow the amount of time that is spent showing videos of that sort as opposed to the slides and the billboards that populated the thing to start with. We're up to two-thirds of the time on average, we are showing video of one sort or another. And in one month this year, we actually were up to 85 percent, which is pretty amazing. There's a couple of pieces that affect that greatly. Your help in getting us the anonymous people at an hour and 40 minutes certainly helps. Not only is it a good message, but it takes a lot of time, so that helps the statistic. But long supervisor meetings like this one also boosted them. So I urge you to talk slowly in future meetings.
No.
No. Actually, the improvement is due mainly to a new approach to scheduling. Now, those of you who opened up your township newsletter saw a chart in it that looks something like that. We've taken the broadcast, I think the colors are off in this, but we've taken the broadcast day, which we consider to be from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight, and we've divided it up into subject blocks. And we are trying to put content into those blocks in those times so that people, when they go to the channel, have some expectation of when they would get the kinds of programs that they would get. So the EAC hour is at 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The seniors are shown at 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors at 12:00 noon and 7:00 p.m., and so forth and so on. We've got the world kind of divided up by subject matter so that viewing habits can be stoked. The new programming we did this year is the anonymous people that Barbara helped get hold of, as well as the panel discussion with TVN that she participated in, so we are rotating those through the schedule at this point. We have a whole new approach to the Senior Task Force recordings, which we started in January. It's a much livelier format, and it's a...
It's fun.
It's actually kind of fun. And so we've got those up. They're getting up pretty quickly, and we're rotating them through the schedule, as I said, at 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. We also did a traffic panel and a neighborhood watch video, and there's continuously new Environmental Advisory Council and Stormwater offerings, which we reach out to other sources to get, and Ray and his people look at to give us approvals. The Comcast franchise renewal negotiations dragged on for damn near three years. It was worth it, I think. We signed up for a 15-year term. We got a lot more support money than we were going to get to start with, mainly by finding out what others were getting and being able to document it. And number three, we got some protections against the technology that we use being made obsolete in the future. So that's actually, from my point of view, the most important thing we got out of it. Technical operations, we're constantly working to keep the equipment maintained and upgraded. That's a constant battle. I blew the system up yesterday and had to fix it so we could have this show tonight. So we're our own worst enemy in some regards. Our main failure for the year is that we are still looking for additional TAB board members, and we would like to fill those two positions. I would say the reason we don't have more on the accomplishment side is that although we have tons of good ideas, we just don't have the horses to get the work done. And so we really are looking for some people with social media skills and with videography skills who are interested in putting some work into things of that sort, and that would really help to revitalize the engine. One thing I didn't mention in here, which I should have, there were some awards that were won this year. They were, although we in the TAB group spend time analyzing and looking at social media and website, we're not deeply into the operation of those items, and yet the PSATs did award us, give us, give us high awards for both of those areas this past year, and that's certainly worth noting. Next year, this year, first thing on the top of the list is get those two members. So I think I've spent enough time, you understand what that's about. It's being able to get things done. Now that we have Comcast under our belt, sure enough, Verizon's right on the horizon. I don't think they've sent us the formal notice yet, but it will arrive probably in the next six months, and then the fun and games start all over again with the second In terms of content, there are, there's a long list of items here. 10 of those items are specific programs that we really want to, we want to focus on. We're going to do more of the Who We Are, What We Do series with different departments and boards, the EAC and the Ways and Means being at least the two first candidates. Bike and hike, we have a lot of things we'd like to do with that, including a trail overview and individual trail videos. I believe the bike and hike people are interested, but we've just been purchasing equipment to enable us to do appropriate outdoor recording, and so hopefully, we'll kick that off somewhere in the next month or two. We're definitely going to be doing something on the bird walk. We bought Ray a special headset, Madonna headset, so he can be looking up in the tree, speaking into a microphone, and we have a wireless receiver on our camera. So Mr. Ray here is going to step into the 20th century in April, or is it the 21st? I'm not sure. Anyway, of note here, we're also going to spend some time, we think we've got some leads on how we could salvage some of the Moments in Time video that we recorded three or four years ago. And we also would like to put a project together that focuses on that mural in the back of the room. There's a big, long story associated with that. The mural has numerous scenes from the township that are of interest, and we think we could create a program of, a series of programs of how that was put together and what the scenes are all about that might be of interest. We want to continue to expand the social media footprint, and obviously, we will continue to focus on upgrading the equipment. We're not at the stage now where equipment needs wholesale replacement, but we are in fact on the side, building a fund for the day when that happens. We're not at end of life for what we've got, but we're two to three years away from it when that whole set of equipment back there is probably, will run out of gas. So we're building a war kitty to replace that stuff when the moment comes. And that is the list of what we want to do. We thank you for your support. Help us get some more members, if you could.
Very good, Ed. Thank you, Ed.
Anyone here want to join the EAC? I mean, TAB board? Not the EAC, TAB board? Sorry. All right, next up is the Traffic Advisory Committee, Mark Scheiner.
This year, we've now reduced our committee size to three members at large. We used to have eight, one for each voting district, and we've been kind of short of that number for a couple of years now. So finally, we decided it was time to face the reality and reduce it to a little bit, to three. I think it's going to be a much better, much better for everything. We really didn't need one person for each voting district. It didn't really benefit us. You know, technology has moved on compared to where it was 10 years ago when this committee was formed. We also have Chief Logan and Dave Tomco, usually Ken's, and Ken's our liaison. Typically, it's a very operational committee. Nothing has changed in that regard this year. We look at issues that have come in from different angles. There's an online web forum where most of our stuff is coming in from. We do get occasional letters and emails coming in from different angles, usually via the chief. Sometimes the info line, Stephanie sometimes gets stuff, so on and so forth. We review new traffic plans, new development plans for traffic concerns. There hasn't been too many of them lately, but there are obviously a few developments that are starting up. And then at the year end, we decided to go to this more streamlined format, and thanks to Ken for all his help in working that discussion through and making it happen. This year, we're going to be focusing less on operational issues, we hope, and more on things like more strategic type things. For instance, we want to look at the flows of information as they come in, because sometimes we don't even hear about issues until after the fact. And they seem to come in at different angles and bypass us other times. They come in and they wait, and we want to be able to track those issues and make sure we know they're being resolved in a timely fashion. We've seen a couple of issues this year where that is not the case. We also want to review the traffic data, figure out a good way to display it on the website. We've got a lot of data. We've got three to four years' worth of data in most cases on the roads. We, I think, can probably do a little bit better job of making it more graphical and be able to display it on the website to make it understandable by the average user versus, you know, the experts on the committee. And we also want to do more to educate the residents on traffic issues. Our standard complaints are usually pretty much, there's speeding on our road, blah, blah, blah. Many cases, it's not legitimate once we look through the data, and then we just have to respond back. Things like, that's kind of, most of the issues tend to revolve around speeding complaints. So, okay, you're welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
Brenda, sorry, you're up. The last, Tim, the best last. Tallest person. No, there was one tall one. It's the Ways and Means Committee.
Well, I know it's been a long evening for everyone here. I have actually marveled, sitting in the audience, at the dedication of the people and all the things, all the great things that we have in the township. And thank you to the people sitting at the table for all of your support, for all of the committees, and actually, for all of the volunteers. Some of our volunteers, such as Ed, Mr. TAB, who was out here earlier, serves on two committees. And Bob Zelnick is also on two committees. We have a full staff or a full complement on the Ways and Means Committee after being down a couple of members, too. So thank you, Board, for appointing Joe and Bob Zelnick recently to our group. I also want to immediately thank Ken Schneider for being our liaison, and I had to smile earlier because he covered part of my presentation, so, which is fine, which is fine, due to the lateness of the hour. So we'll be quick. In conjunction with the Township Administration, Stephanie and Ken Wallace in particular, but many other people that are in the room, Dick, Karen, depending upon what committees we need, appreciate your help. Dean Logan, come to our committees for discussion, and that's a very important part of how this township works. So in conjunction primarily with the financial folks, we review and analyze financial information, develop recommendations to be presented to the Board of Supervisors for consideration and discussion, and always with the common goal to safeguard the financial condition of the township. I'll take a quick sidebar here. When Ed was talking about photographing the Ways and Means Committee, can you imagine how interesting that would be for people to watch in the community? Probably not. Anyway, what we do, every time, we compare actual revenues with expenditures of the approved budget for both revenues and expenditures. We project the impact of current financial decisions and our best estimates or guess on current information of economic conditions over the next five years. We don't have a crystal ball, but we try to work on logical assumptions. We recommend changes, if we see them, to improve financial reporting procedures and perhaps effective use of township assets. But probably our most important goal is monitoring fund balance over a short-term period, trying to project it for the current year. Again, that crystal ball doesn't always work, and long-term, which is up to five years. Again, recommendations, Ways and Means, we don't make or change policy, we don't perform duties or the responsibilities of the township staff. And we really do try not to get in their way with some of our, you know, requests for information. And the Board of Supervisors approves the annual budget that sets the spending limits and determines the tax rates, just to support, to support the spending plan of the township. All right, Mr. Schneider. Earlier, we were talking about what year we were in. So this could be reflections of what we did in 2015, looking at the 2016 budget, which was just passed. In 2014, the Ways and Means Committee did quite a bit of work with a framework, excuse me, to develop a framework looking at capital project management. And we continued that during... during the last calendar year. Moved up workshops with the Board of Supervisors to review major expenditure lines and develop a common understanding of how to budget and what we wanted to budget and look at. And there was increased engagement, I think, between the Township Administration and the Ways and Means to collect budget information. We also, I think, agreement, I thought a lot about that word, that small tax increases over multiple years are always preferable to a large increase, and we could have a long discussion on what small increase would be and what large increase means, but we do have those conversations. And again, going back into the audience, which I've sat through for the last two hours, the number of awards that Doylestown Township has received over the last year, I didn't realize. You know, I work on a township committee, but again, the Ways and Means Committee received something from DCED, and the award was called Fiscal Management and Best Practices. Probably not the most exciting title tonight, but again, something that the township should be pleased about. Objectives for 2016. Looking back on what we did during 2015 to plan for this year's budget, again, there was, excellent work was done on January 27 to start talking about planning the budget for 2017, and we'll be working on that at our first, or our next meeting in February to adjust the budget planning schedule, try to put some dates, firm dates on the calendar, disseminate detailed information earlier to facilitate review by the Township Manager and the Board of Supervisors, and perhaps set an earlier cutoff for submission of non-emergency items for budget consideration. And ask that, and look at, new initiatives. We would want to see data to support the request. We'll continue to provide perspective on a five-year budget program, projections, and continue to refine the capital project model, focusing on large, and this is key, multi-year projects. A number of our grants fall over or span multiple years, and that can give us a little heartburn, if you will, from a financial point of view. Again, looking forward to 2016. Complete a comprehensive, non-uniform compensation evaluation and comparison. Expand Ways and Means quarterly presentations to include a review of major programs. I'm sure we'll have some conversations about that. And things that I really like professionally, analyze financing alternatives for the Township Building Project and the Pebble Hill Sewer Project. So an invitation to attend the Ways and Means Committee? Yeah, you'll be really excited. We meet the last Wednesday of each month at 7:00 PM. It'll help you gain a better understanding, though, of how the budget is prepared and how your tax dollars are spent. If you come, speaking to the public, well, ask questions and share your good ideas. And also attend the work sessions that are held by the Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee. And I have to laugh. Sometimes I watch the replays of the Board of Supervisors meetings on DTV while I'm working out at really early hours of the morning, Ed, and visit the township website regularly for updates. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I think I'm not speaking out of school here. We so much appreciate all the work the volunteers do, how you work with our staff, how you work with us, the time and talent and expertise you all put into running this good government, and we simply couldn't do what we do without all of you, and I think you're all good stewards of this community, so thank you very much.
Ditto.
All right, double ditto. Where did Rick go? He had a plane. He went to Arrow Reserve. He doesn't care as much as we do. All right, yeah, we do. All right. Next meeting of this board is Tuesday, February 16. It'll be a 7 o'clock meeting. We're going to be closed Monday, February 15 for President's Day. Fill out the stormwater survey, please. You can find it on DoylestownPA.org. Ski tickets and movie tickets are still available. They're limited, and they're priced well, so please take advantage of that service. Christmas tree drop-off ends February 14, and you can drop them off at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. And we're taking nominations for Unsun Hero Award Office. We need them by March 1st. Anything else? Hearing nothing else? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Board.